Welcome to the July 17 meeting of the Brainerd Planning Commission. Mr. Krambick, we have a roll call, please.
Duval.
President.
Francis. Runenwald. Norwood.
Here.
Peterson.
President.
Stangline.
Here.
Gorham.
Here. All right. Mr. Peterson, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? All right, looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Or any changes to the agenda, if anybody has a change to the agenda?
So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Do we discuss this one, Tiffany? Can we discuss agendas? We could discuss.
We could discuss.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign. We have an agenda. All right, now we're looking to approve the minutes of our June meeting. Looking for a motion there, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign. Brings us to number six. We get to skip by number six. We have no unfinished business.
Shazam.
It's kind of satisfying. You don't think it's really true, but it's really satisfying. All right.
Clean plate, close.
Clean plate, exactly. That leads us to number seven, new business. And we're going to shut out tonight looking at IUP interim use permit for 1123 15th Avenue Northeast, looking to do a short-term rental. James, could you introduce us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Michael Fish, on behalf of property owners Lumen Properties LLC, is applying for a short-term rental at 1123 15th Avenue Northeast. This is a four-bedroom house located in the TN1 district and is located on Rice Lake. The applicant states the occupancy is 11 within the house rules. The occupancy must be reduced to nine based on the bedroom sizes. I did make the applicant aware of this. The yard is available for guest use along with a fire pit. Guests are responsible for making sure that all fires are completely extinguished when they are done tending to them. If the property manager receives a call from a neighbor concerned about a fire that is unattended or too large, the manager will deal with this immediately. There are no pets allowed on the property in their submitted policies. There is a rule imposing quiet hours from 10:00 p.m. until 9:00 a.m., which is within city code requirements. The weekly garbage schedule is provided for renters per the provided house rules. As of writing this, three parties have contacted the community development department regarding this interim use permit and did have concerns based on the previous residents' use and disruption to the neighborhood. I did include the email and the letter within the agenda request. So with this, staff does recommend approval of the interim use permit as they have met the conditions of the interim use permit, but with some added conditions. First is the short-term rental cannot operate until there is an approved inspection by the housing inspector and the fire marshal. Number two, the interim use permit terminates one year after approval, which is now in our new code. All outdoor lighting fixtures shall meet the standards of Section 515-4-8, outdoor lighting within the zoning code. All watercraft docked in the lake at the property shall be within the boundaries of 1123 15th Avenue Northeast. And overnight, guest vehicles and trailers must be parked in the driveway. Two additional vehicles may be parked on the street for daytime guests. And with that, I can certainly answer any questions of the planning commission.
Questions for James?
Mr. Chair.
Michael.
James, your proposed condition number three, would that mean that existing lighting that is not compliant with our code would then have to be retrofitted?
That's correct.
That would be one of the actions that might occur as a result of...
That's correct. There was quite a lighting concern from neighboring properties, so that was a staff recommendation in there to correct that issue.
Okay, so if we apply this condition, then it would compel the applicant to make changes to the lighting so that it now conforms to the ordinance?
That's correct.
Perfect. Thank you very much. No further, Mr. Chair.
James?
For staff, within the conditions, I didn't see anything as to necessitating for the change of the occupancy from 11 down to nine. Is that an amended?
It could be put into the condition itself. It would be a requirement to be posted. It's within the findings of fact and a requirement of the code itself, so a violation of that is also grounds for reviewing the interim use permit if violation, but certainly could be added in a stipulation as well.
Doesn't necessarily need to be done.
Wouldn't have to be.
Okay.
Other questions? All right, with that, I'm going to open a public hearing at 6:05. If the applicant is either present or online, I would welcome him to come on up and speak. And we'll look for your name and your address, please. Thank you.
Yeah, it's Mike Fish. It's 1133 180th Avenue down in Pierce is where I personally live, but my office is in the CTC Business Building there in Baxter. So if anybody's here that has concerns, I do have a packet that I like to give out, which goes through the extension of our house rules. And over the last several years, we've developed over 50 of these. I've up to well over 3,000 bookings in the last several years, and I currently have a 4.9 on Airbnb as far as a rating goes. There's several things that we do to protect the community, to protect our neighbors. I got into this back when it was extremely heated, before there was even a county license that was involved in some of the conversations about what this thing would look like and does it work? And I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly through the years. I'm very honest about that. My issues are probably about 1 out of 100. This is actually part of my copy of my house rules, and the first paragraph of it is have the utmost consideration for our neighbors. They didn't choose to live next to a rental. They have my cell. They're invited to call or text me 24/7, and we are committed to being there within 15 minutes if there is ever an issue. So there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle, but what I like to tell people who are concerned is our goal is 10 to 15 groups a year. Right? We're going for usually seven to 10-day rentals if we can. We don't run party houses. There's no money in that, and it's certainly no longevity in that. And I found out of the couple hundred neighbors I've worked with over the years, I completely respect their considerations. I once had an attorney in Crosslake screaming in my face a year ago, "How would you like to be me living next to one of these?" I fully understand and respect the two sides of this, but we go through great lengths to make sure that the quiet enjoyment of the neighbors is maintained. And we've got just our rental agreement, and this is just part of one of the tools we use to make sure that we don't have issues. It's by far the most comprehensive rental agreement that I know of. We're constantly developing and adding it to it and working with the neighbors, particularly in Aiken County, where sometimes I'll have four or five neighbors come up and have these conversations. I've sat down with neighbors and said, "List your concerns and we'll make that work for you." I've got one where the neighbors came A, B, C, D, and E, and that's part of our marketing, part of our rules and regulations. And there's several other things I do to work with neighbors. For example, a lot of neighbors have friends and family that want to come to the area, and we give them massive discounts, because why not have your friends and family stay with us next door when they're coming in? So we do everything we can to make this a win-win with everybody, and I fully realize that if it's not a win-win for the community and the neighbors, there's no longevity in it at all. And last time I was here, I said, "I don't expect to have another one in Brainerd," and I really didn't. But as you probably know, I've got Juniper, and we've had that for a year now. The only reason why I ended up with this one is because it happens to be on Rice Lake. I specialize in lake home management. And to be honest with you, this was just an opportunity that came up with a very nice family. They're cattle ranchers from southern Minnesota, and they called me and said, "We're dreaming of having a lake home for our friends and family." And we know what you do. Obviously, for financial reasons, a lot of the people I work with, virtually all of the people I work with, I've got maybe four actual investment properties. All the rest are family that have always dreamed of having a lake home or trying to keep their grandfather's lake home they've inherited two, three generations. And the only way they can do that is to have us fill it up when they're not using it. So I certainly like to answer any of your questions. I can go into detail on any concerns. My understanding is that I really hope and I really believe the neighbors are going to be very, very happy when this is here, because it sounds like their concerns are from the past owner. And as I've said in some of my advocacy over the years, I've had several experiences where owners thoroughly enjoy what we do and have had much worth experiences with the neighbor there before or other neighbors who can pretty much do whatever they want to do. I mean, one example, we banned fireworks from our properties. It was a $500 fine and immediately eviction for fireworks, where a lot of people are pointing up at their neighbors, blowing off fireworks all the time. So quite frankly, we're under the spotlight, and what we do is a lot stricter than what the average person that owns a house does. And yeah, I'd love to answer anybody's questions if anybody has any...
Thank you, Mr. Fish. Any questions for the applicant? I have one question. Are you familiar with who was the property manager previous to the ownership change? Who was doing the... Who was the manager then?
It wasn't the rental. It was just the owners there.
It was just the owners?
Yeah, it was just the owners partying. So I mean, I get that a lot. I had one on South Long where...
Okay, that's good.
It was just the owners.
Thank you. We may ask you back.
Okay.
Mr. Krambick, I've got a background question perhaps I should have asked earlier. Was this property ever been registered before as a vacation rental?
I don't believe so.
And so it was just family, it wasn't rental? Because I got the impression from reading the notes that it was a rental.
No, I believe it was just the property owners that would invite people over. Yep.
Okay, all right. Very good. All right. I'd like to invite anybody else who'd like to come up and speak on the matter. Come on up, don't be shy. Again, your name and address, and thank you.
Marty Johnson, 1104 15th Avenue Northeast. So there's one house between us. I also own the property across the street from me, and I also own the one half a block up on the top of the hill. I moved into the neighborhood in 1992 to the house right next to it. To give you a little history, the people that were in the house that they're talking about turned to rental, they finally aged out where they just couldn't handle it anymore. She had passed away, and he moved to New Mexico, so they sold to the owner that's there. So yeah, it's never been a rental.
Okay, very good.
Okay. I don't know if you know the neighborhood?
Little bit.
Okay. So we have the rental houses next to mine, just at the bottom of the hill, that the police frequent quite often, so that gets to be a real challenge. A little bit of the research that I did tells me that this is going through whether we say we like it or not. They said they've never turned one down. Am I wasting my breath, or what are we doing?
Well, I appreciate your concerns.
It says in the letter we have a chance.
Yeah, I appreciate your concerns. We're not here to answer, I can't answer direct questions about the history of that. You can certainly direct those to Mr. Krambick if you wish, if you have direct questions. But otherwise, I thank you for your opinions. I appreciate it. Anything else?
So is there an answer to that?
Well, what's your specific question? Ask your specific question.
Has any of these been turned down?
Mr. Krambick, can you help us out on that?
On application?
So IUPs, as long as they meet the condition, they're typically supposed to be granted. That's how that works. There was one that was denied because they were operating and advertising as a short-term rental while they were going through the process. They were continuing to rent to people, so they were in violation of city code. That is the reason that one was denied by city council.
Okay. Thank you. I thought there was one.
Okay.
Does that help?
So they pretty much go through. So my question is, these are some folks that spent $480,000 to buy this home, made the application on the 25th, committed to the money, spent the money on the 9th, knowing they were going to get the application approved? I don't know of too many business people that'll take that chance.
I appreciate your point of view, sir.
So I'm a little bit in question of that situation. You know, we have the rentals next to me. They're seven units. They're about as short-term as they can be considered. Those people are moving out on a nonstop basis. They may sign a six-month lease, but they're in and out. We've got the ski loons that practice four or five days a week, and they're just wearing out the shoreline. And we've been putting up with those. Now the city's putting short-term rental in over for the campers, and they're expanding the campers again. And if you read the lease or the gift letter from Leonard Lum when he gave them the property, he told them there's no businesses running there. Now you've got the ski loons running their business in there, and they say, "Well, we're doing it by donation," but when they stick the hat in your boat, you're supposed to put money in. So I'm not quite sure where we're going with this, but we could use a little break on our shoreline.
I appreciate your point of view. We have to stick to the mad right hand tonight, which is an IUP. So any other comments?
No, I'm just saying, this is...
I'd certainly welcome. Otherwise, thank you for your time.
We're happy working with you. The big concern I have is my runway isn't probably as long as yours is for investments. And I did a lot of research with the real estate companies around, and they say that these adversely affect my investment. And that's my big concern.
I appreciate your point of view on this, and I'm going to thank you for your contribution. There are issues that are bigger than our group. We're an advisory group. We do the best we can with what we have.
I understand that. And who do you advise?
The city council ultimately sets the policy on short-term rentals in the city. And so I'm going to thank you for your comments tonight. I appreciate it.
Okay, I have two more questions.
Okay.
Okay? The city council just approved some rules for the short-term rentals. Okay? Have you adopted the county rules? Because they're a little more extensive.
James, I'm going to defer to James on that one?
Since we are a municipality, we are bound by our city code.
I understand that, but you could still adopt the county codes.
So I would say, so they may have some provisions in there. I haven't took a deep dive into it, but theirs is just a license. This one's an interim use permit. We have expiration dates with the interim use permit, so interim use permits carry, I would say, it's a lot more restrictive than just simply a license that you receive from the county. So that aspect of it is quite more restrictive.
Yeah, but they have quite a few more restrictive rules in their guidelines than the city does. The way the cities were explained to me by somebody that adopted them is it's like having a speeding ticket for 120 mile an hour. You know, it's just... He basically said it's 120 mile an hour speed limit.
If there's a violation, they can get the interim use permit revoked, which would revoke the short-term rental.
Correct.
So...
But if you don't have any codes that follow it, it doesn't work. You don't have any rules with any teeth in them.
Sir?
And having served on the airport commission and the park board for years...
Sir, we're not here to argue the big issue here.
I'm not.
We're talking about 1123 15th Avenue. If you have any other comments on that, please contribute them. Any other questions, let us know. Otherwise, I thank you for the time.
Okay. So one of the questions I do have is, you have 1,120 feet of household, and you're talking nine people in it? So at 150 square feet per person, I think that's packing them in pretty tight. And then you talked about on-street parking for daytime use. We have a one-way street with no parking.
Thank you very much.
Have you been by the property?
There's other people that'd like to speak. If there's other time, you can come up and speak, but now you've taken your turn.
Okay.
I thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Come on up? Nope, we're not going to do a retort to it. We're going to invite other people to come up and speak on the matter.
I just wanted to...
No. I don't want, I would like other people to come up and speak, and then we'll have a chance for any rebuttals. Thank you.
Cheryl Caitland. I'm next door to the property. I submitted an email to James. Did he forward that on to you?
We did, thank you. We received it.
Thank you for this time to chat. I'll be brief.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Could you pull the microphone down to you so I can hear you? I have fear issues.
Can you hear me better?
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Did you all have a chance to read that?
I think we did.
Okay, thank you. So I just kind of had some questions. Some of the things that James had mentioned was, so it's a permit, so it's reviewed after a certain period of time, I assume, and then do we meet again and talk with how things were going or things like that before it's renewed?
Will Mr. Krambick talk about the renewal process?
Thank you.
Yep, so the renewal goes through the same process as what we're going through here. So neighbors within 350 feet would be notified. There'd be a public hearing, and you'd get a chance to testify if there's any issues.
Okay. And then, did you mention, Donald, that there will be a city council meeting about this, too?
We're an advisory group, so our decision tonight, yea or nay, will go to the city council. They'll have the final word on it.
Okay. And then do they have a hearing for that where we could come to if we wanted to?
This is the hearing. My understanding is that this is going to be the hearing on the matter. After that, it's referred to the city council. I would not expect a hearing at the city council, although the city council members are certainly always open to your input.
Okay, okay. And then, James, you had mentioned this is an interim permit, so there's an expiration date. So I think in our conversation, it goes for like a year, and then there's a discussion of sorts. So it's kind of, then it's up for renewal or something. Is my understanding correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. And Mr. Fish?
Yes.
You had mentioned, just in the brief package that I got from James at the city, there's like a number of things that are minimal in nature. You had mentioned that if there's any fireworks, for example, of any sort, that there's a $500 fine and eviction. It doesn't say anything about that in my copy.
Yeah, I've actually got that here for you.
Okay.
That was a shorter copy that I gave to the city, because I wanted to just cover what they were asking.
Okay. So those of us that this change would affect, will we be notified of the terms, all of the terms?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, point of order here.
Yeah, we're kind of falling out of order here. So Mr. Fish, you're going to have to wait until we're done with this. You're going to have to direct your questions to us. Direct your questions to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Those are my questions. How will we... So this isn't a complete agreement or anything?
What you're looking at is the agreement. This is the agreement that, between the city and the applicant. That is the agreement that will dictate that relationship. Mr. Fish has his own rules, and he's certainly after the meeting, he can share the rules with you. And I'm sure he'll assure you that he has strict rules. He's kind of made that quite clear. But otherwise, please continue with your questions.
Okay. So if this is changed and this goes through, the zoning changes, is that correct?
The zoning, this is not a zoning issue. This is an interim use permit. So we're not changing zoning rules for the whole city. We are only entering into an interim use permit between an applicant and the city. That's what we're discussing tonight.
1123 15th Avenue Northeast?
That's all we're discussing is that property.
Can I finish my question?
You send the man.
Thank you. Will the zoning change for that particular property?
The zoning will not change. It would've been interim use permit, but the zoning, overall zoning will remain the same. Each zone will allow certain uses have to be either a conditional use permit or something like this, depending upon what the use is.
Okay, so say somebody wanted to operate a kennel out of their home or something, they'd have to get...
That'd be a completely different...
Right, no, but same but different. Okay. So who... I know James had mentioned about the lighting, because it's stadium bright. There was also loudspeakers all around the house, so everyone can hear all their music and bad karaoke and everything for blocks away. Do we have any recourse on that?
Well, we can't go back in the past. There's nothing, in terms of what happened in the past, that's simply not our matter tonight.
It's attached to the house.
Let me finish. We're not discussing what happens in the past. I'm certainly sorry about things that have happened in the past, but that's not what we're discussing tonight. We're discussing a new agreement between a new owner and the city. And the rules are pretty explicit in what we're going to be talking, in the interim use permit, about what is allowed and what is not allowed. In addition to that, Mr. Fish will have his own house rules. So we're not here to discuss the past.
We're not discussing noise ordinances for the city of Brainerd?
Phrase that again?
We're not discussing noise ordinances for the city of Brainerd?
No, we're not discussing that tonight. We're discussing a very specific issue for an interim use permit tonight at a specific property. That's what we're talking about.
So what happens if we have... So do I just call the city then?
Yes, you do.
Every time there's a big party?
Yes, you do. That is what you will do.
The police?
Absolutely.
Every time they do the loudspeakers every night and the parties? What about blocking our driveway?
All of those things will be covered, you cover it through the city, and you direct your complaints to the city. That's how this is handled.
So it doesn't matter that we live there?
Of course it matters that you live there.
Well, it seems to me like you're not respecting or taking into consideration the people who live there every day.
Ma'am, I respectfully disagree. We all, I read your letter all the way through. I'm sure my fellow members also read your letter. We are concerned. We have neighbors, too. We understand that it's not always easy living in a neighborhood. And so again, if you have specific things about this application, we're interested in hearing them. Otherwise, I would respectfully ask you to defer to other people who would like to speak tonight.
Okay. I do have a couple more things.
Please, continue.
Mr. Fish said that we have his phone number and his contact information. We have nothing of the sort. We don't know who owns the property. We have none of his information, so I would feel like if there were some issues, we would like a person to talk to, not an unmanned voicemail, and unless you want me calling you every night when there's something going on, we need a contact.
Ma'am, you will get contact information. I trust Mr. Fish. He's worked with our group before. He will provide you with contact information. Otherwise, you direct any complaints and questions you have to Mr. Krambick and the city.
Okay. So someone will let us know who we can call?
Yes, they will.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else you can finish up here?
Okay, so the noise ordinance was the same as the city's. What about watercraft restrictions in the dock? I would address that with Mr. Fish?
Those will be addressed through the agreement, and they're addressed through city rules.
Okay.
I understand you've had a bad experience in the past. Hopefully, this is a new beginning. I think Mr. Fish is an honest man. I know the city means well. We all mean well. well. I thank you for your comments and I would like you to please let somebody else come up and speak. I think there's other people that would like to speak tonight.
Okay. Can I ask, can I ask that we have private property?
No, we are, we're moving along to the next speaker at this point. We have to keep moving along here. So thank you so much. I appreciate your input.
Hi, good evening. Virginia cop. I live at 1119th 15th Avenue Northeast, so I'm in the house directly to the southern end. A couple of concerns. One is my driveway. There's no division between my driveway and their driveway. There is obvious where that separation is, so that's one of my concerns about having so many cars. I really would like you to look at allowing on-street parking. You can't get, if there's a car parked here, particularly a large, like F-150, you go around L coming down to 15th, that's very tight. You can barely get two cars down there. Periodically, we do have people driving the wrong way. So that's a concern of mine is this on-street parking. The other thing I'm concerned about is the marina. It is not a dock. It's a marina. And what happens when pontoon boats are parked down there, they're parked right here, I have no view down the rest of the lake. So those are my largest concerns.
I appreciate your, your time and I appreciate your comments. Thank you so much. Any other speakers? Anybody else like to come up and address the group? Before, Mr. Fish, we want to see if anybody else would like to come up and speak. Anybody online? All right. Well, if they're not coming forth, I think we're going to be okay.
Mr. Chair, could you reiterate the press, the whatever thing for them?
Oh, yes, we have a little thing here. If you would like to, if you'd like to raise your hand, is star three and it's star six to unmute. Thank you. For our online speaker, if they can hear us. Give that a few more seconds there from the online speaker. All right. Mr. Fish, I'll give you a couple of minutes. Make it quick and we, if we can just kind of answer a couple of questions. And again, no questions from the group to Mr. Fish. We'll let him speak. Thank you.
Obviously, it takes time to build trust. Going way back, as I mentioned, I was involved in the development of the county rules. It is true that the county does have certain things that Brainerd doesn't have. I follow 100% of all county rules on every one of my properties and because if I don't, there's concerns. So I, again, I, as I said, it takes time to build up trust. I don't allow any parking on any public streets in any way, shape, or form ever, and I certainly went on this property. Number one, there's certainly not room for it. Number two, again, it's completely against county rules. No parking in, in the yards, no parking on public streets. My, all my documentation follows the county rules, which gives us up to one vehicle per bedroom and the same amount of daytime guests. The square footage, you know, that does not take in account to the lower level, the basement. Yes, my folks purchased this because they wanted to purchase it as a lake, as a lake home. I've actually got a waiver where I make it very clear to my clients that I can't guarantee they're going to get a license. I mean, there's no guarantees. It's not going to change tomorrow, let alone, you know, this. So I really do feel for everybody's concerns. The speakers, if they haven't been removed, they absolutely will be removed. I will give everybody a copy of my rules. I don't even allow fall language in my yards. In my rules, it says, my neighbors might have young children, they have to put up with renters and they're not going to put up with screaming, partying, swearing, loud vulgar music of any kind. So everybody will have my personal cellphone. I'm not going to lie to you. I've had the caller text at 2:00 in the morning. I respond to it immediately. So this is, I, over the years, I've gotten my problems down to probably about one out of 100. We have 10 to 15 families here in the next month, year or two. I really hope after this meeting, I will say a special prayer that I go two, three, four years here without an issue, to say the least. Watercraft restrictions, I'm very open to, you know, again, I deal with a lot of different lakes and a lot of different restrictions. Absolutely will take care of that. And again, there will be absolutely no parking on the road. I am aware of the neighbors' concerns with the driveway. We absolutely need to deal, make that very, very clear that there's no, where that driveway is, so people aren't stepping on her property in any way, shape, or form. And I don't intend to let anybody bring campers or anything like that in any way, shape, or form on that property. I intend to follow the county rules, which again, are maybe a little bit more robust in some places than the city rules are. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Anybody else like to speak at the public hearing? Anybody online? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:33 and I'm going to open the floor to discussion or questions for James.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for James. So this is, it jumped out at me that, because there is a fire, an outside fireplace. And we have recently had emerald ash bor in our town and I know you've been working really hard on that. And I know there are restrictions about firewood. Do we, should we have something in there about where the firewood would come from or...
No, not particularly where the firewood would come from. Is that still a DNR restricted type thing? In our area, we wouldn't want somebody chopping an emerald ash bor tree down in the City of Brainerd and then bring it to their lake cabin where there isn't an infestation.
It's because we already have it. We don't have to worry about where the woods come from.
At least emerald ash bor, yeah.
Dark. Thank you. Other questions? Many other commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Paul.
So I think, you know, this is not our first sort of public water adjacent short-term rental. But this is our first one on Rice Lake. I mean, we have one that was down on the Mississippi River there on College Drive across in the ball field. So, but the issues that are being raised here, some of those are pretty unique to, to lakes or, or reservoirs and not to rivers. So the dock is one of those. And, and the dock, it is large, you know, when I look at it, it's sort of a marina style. It's not the stick dock that you have here, but it has boat slips, if you would, for more than one boat. But that's something that's regulated by the DNR. The Department of Natural Resources has regulatory authority over dock structures. And from my view of that, it looks like that is currently a conforming dock. So there's not a violation there, but it seems to me that it would be appropriate to, to maybe fold in a reference to the public waters, the DNR's dock rules, so that the property will remain compliant. So if there's modifications to the dock such that it no longer meets the rules of the state, then, then their interim use permit would be invalid. So it'd be sort of a way to kind of manage the, the size of that in a way and keep it compliant. A second thinking here and, and staff recommendations kind of capture, you know, where you, where you moor a boat, where you dock a boat, where you beach a boat. Should, you know, we should restrict that to within where the property lines, if you imagine a property line going out into the lake, just extending them out there, a dotted line, if you would, out in the lake, that those uses need to, you know, the docking, the boating, the mooring needs to be constrained within those imaginary lines going out into the water. And that's not uncommon. Probably a decade or two ago, the Dock Wars, if folks remember this game of Tetris where two adjacent property owners were trying to cut each other off with docks. And finally, I think the county came in and said, hang on a minute, we're, we're going to regulate saying you're, you can only extend them out from your property lines. So I think there's a precedent out there and it would be helpful for us to, to place these kinds of standard conditions on each of our riparian short-term rental units that come before. So we have a standard set of language right away that goes on these. So James has included some language to that effect already. And I think the, the last one would, would also be to, to take the property and all their accessory structures, you know, outbuildings and such, and, and you need to conform to the city's shoreline ordinance. So there are different setbacks for shoreline properties than there are for properties within the city that are 1,000 feet away from Rice Lake or Gilbert Lake or 300 feet away from the Mississippi River. So we would want to ensure that, that we have compliance with those regulations before we issue a permit or if there were changes to the property or changes to uses of the property, we would want to go ahead and get those. So I'm proposing that there are three additional points that we want to maybe consider besides, or at least one modification to the staff recommendations here. You know, so what we're seeing from what Mr. Fish has testified here, he's addressed, what I heard is a pretty important concern about parking on the street, narrow street, one-way street. Mr. Fish is saying no parking on the street. And I presume that would be for the guests of your, your tenants as well as the tenants themselves. He's nodding yes in affirmation. And he regulates the number of vehicles. The noise issues that are being amplified through speakers, it seems like that concern, he will be removing the speakers if, if they're not already gone, is what I heard his testimony, which, which alleviates the concern of an existing condition. And I'm, I haven't looked at his rules about how managing noise, but also, Derek Cranbok has identified that they are the outlet to receive issues of complaint there, if there are issues of noise and those sorts of things. And then, and then, and then again, his openness to any watercraft restrictions there to, to again, adjust, adjust things to maintain good relations with the neighbors. So I, I see, I see very good proposals from, from the applicant to address the concerns that I heard this evening. So, so with that, Mr. Chair, I'm proposing three, three amended...
Motion, or are you...
I'm just proposing that there are three additional conditions here for purpose of discussion and I would add those to a, a motion if we want to get to that point.
Very good. All right. Other input on this?
Mr. Chair, James, could you, if, if there is a violation of these, we pass this, there's a violation, could you explain the process by which an interim use permit might be revoked? If that's the right word.
Just depending on the severity, severity, staff would review it. Could be, you know, if it's a, maybe a warning letter to start with. If it continues to be an issue, it'd be brought before the planning commission for review for potential recommendation for revocation. Again, if it's probably a severe issue, it might go right to the planning commission for review and then city council. It's kind of the same process. Your neighbors are notified, the applicant's notified, and it would go through the same process of approval as it would for revocation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Duval.
And may I, may I add, there is an additional layer of permitting through the rental license with the city that also has performance standards in there regarding problem properties. So if, if the police department is called down there for, for a particular nuisance reason and it becomes a recurring thing, down a second time, down a third time, there is a path there for, for also suspending the rental license, which would have the net same effect of stopping the operation until the applicant becomes compliant with, with the steps that are outlined in the rental code.
Sounds like we have some checks and balances here and that's good. All right. Other question? Other comments? I'm not hearing them. I'm certainly open to somebody making a motion. Colin.
Mr. Chair, it seems to me that Mr. Fish is following city ordinances. Seems that he has thought of many of the concerns that have been brought up tonight and he is sensitive to them. I believe we have no reason to, to reject the application, so I move to approve.
Would you like to, any consideration to adding some of the motions that have been discussed? Otherwise, we can certainly do that later, but this is a good time to include any motions, right now when you're making a motion.
For the conditions.
And so, these were some of the ones, the subjects that Mike brought up.
Okay. Parking, noise, and...
Watercraft, mhm.
Okay.
It can be a general suggestion.
Okay.
Help me out.
May I? If we would include in the, a, a condition that dock size and dock configuration shall comply with applicable state regulations.
Okay.
That boat docking, mooring, beaching shall occur only within property lines as if extended into the lake.
Okay.
And then the property and all accessory structures shall conform to the City of Brainerd shoreline ordinance. Three that I would propose adding.
Want to mention anything about off-street parking? Or is that, were we pretty well confident we've got the off-street parking covered? You had mentioned that.
Yeah, and... So, you know, that, you know, this is, Mr. Francis's motion, number five condition currently has sort of an allowance for on-street parking for daytime guests. And Mr. Fish was implying that that would be parking, that would be on the property and not on the street. So am I, am I interpreting you correctly that the guests' parking, in addition to your tenants', would have to be off-street?
Yeah, there, there will be no parking on the street. You can put that in there. There's just too, there's no room for parking on that.
Okay, so he's affirming.
Okay.
Defirming that none of the guests nor their, or tenants nor their guests would be parking on the street. So that would imply almost like striking the second part of the, the two additional vehicles on the street.
Then I'm just going to intercede for a second. James, do you feel like you have a, you understand the motion that we're making?
Understanding the motion and then should be clarification if you are also recommending the rest of staff's recommendations as well.
Oh, yes. With the inclusion of staff recommendations and the conditions from Commissioner Duval, I would move to approve.
All right. Good job. We're looking for a second.
I'll second it.
We have a second for Mr. Peterson. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? Oh, yes. Tiffany, please.
I, I have some, I have great sympathy. I mean, this is my neighborhood too. But I don't feel comfortable holding Mr. Fish and the new owners responsible for bad behavior of the previous owner. And I hope that this will actually be better than what has been going on there. So I think this is good.
I, I would agree with Tiffany's sentiment. I think this is a, a fresh start. I think this is, this is good. I will be in favor of this. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Mr. Cranbok, would you like to discuss the next steps?
Yeah, so this will be heard at the next city council meeting, which will be August, Monday, August 5th at 7:30 PM in the city council chambers. And they will either approve or deny the recommendation from planning commission.
All right. Thank you so much. All right, we are moving on to 7B. This is the conditional use permit for a childcare expansion at 418 8th Avenue Northeast, better known as Bethlehem Lutheran. Mr. Cranbok, would you like to set us up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So TCC has submitted a request for an amendment to the conditional use permit to operate a commercial daycare facility at 418 8th Avenue Northeast. This is the same site that was previously reviewed at the February 21st planning commission meeting. The amendment is to increase the size of the fenced area per the requirements of the Minnesota Department of Health. The play area would be expanded from 650 square feet to 1,500 square feet. Site plan has been attached showing that expansion. The additional request is to be allowed the ability for a classroom expansion within a year. The, the location of the proposed classroom and outdoor play areas do meet the required setbacks of the TN1 district. The proposed chain link fence extension will be six feet in height and also screened with the same color privacy slats. The existing parcel has multiple spaces for childcare drop-off, pickup, as well as parking. There will be no impact in staff's review on surrounding streets. The community development department recommends approval of the amended CUP with the following conditions: approved inspections and reviews by the fire marshal and building official prior to operation; the expanded six-foot fence shall be the same color as the existing fence; and approval of the CUP amendment without any future occupancy limitations to existing classrooms in the building. So there are other classrooms in the building, probably used for Sunday school at one point. If there were any other types of additions to the property, to the building additions or expansion of the playground, again, that would be, that would require a CUP. Also, probably would not happen, but if there was a remodel or a major remodel to the first floor to add classrooms, that would still trigger a CUP expansion. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Questions for James? Not hearing any? All right. I will open a public hearing at 6:48. Is the applicant either here or online? Would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about what, what's going on? And again, name and address, please.
Erin Karnowski, 2410 Oak Street. James really answered or said everything. We're just looking to expand our playground area, fenced area for licensing and add an additional classroom for our infants and toddlers.
Very good. Any questions for the applicant? Yes, James?
And so, did I hear correctly that it was activated by Department of Health, MDH? As for the additional fencing or...
Yeah, it was a requirement from the Minnesota Department of Health, I believe. The applicant looked at their occupancy and thought that they were only going to need 650 square feet. The Minnesota Department of Health reviewed it and the minimum that she could even have at a childcare facility is 1,500 square feet and that's where we need this expansion.
Excellent. Other, other questions for the applicant? Mr. Duval?
Simply a comment that if I were a kid, I would have probably run into that fence the first day out there. By the time you get a good run going. So I'm really happy that you're proposing to enlarge that considerably. I was actually surprised that it was that small. I hadn't had the scale in mind when we were looking at the initial proposal.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? Anybody online? All right. Thank you for, for the, for the presentation. I appreciate that. All right. Thank you for, for the, for the presentation. I appreciate that. Hearing no other comments, I'll close the public hearing at 6:50. Any discussion in the group? Or a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the conditional use permit for 418 8th Avenue, Brainerd, Northeastern Brainerd with the three conditions proposed by staff.
All right. Looking for a second on that?
Second, Norwood.
Mr. Norwood, any discussion on this? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Next step for the applicant?
So this will be reviewed at the next City Council meeting on August 5th for a approval or denial from City Council.
All right. Very good. This moves us to number eight, public forums. Usually, public forum is kind of quiet. I think tonight we're going to have some, yes, James?
Believe we have one more item?
We do? Which would, oh, we have to review the, of the comp plan. Well, you guys are going to have to wait a little bit. I do appreciate that. We probably should have flipped those things, but we didn't. So James, start us on the review of the, of the strategic, what are we calling this? The implementation progress.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the Planning Commission directed staff at the June 19th Planning Commission meeting to create a discussion item on the Comprehensive Plan Implementation Strategy progress. Chapter nine of the Comprehensive Plan serves as the action plan for prioritizing the goals and policies within each chapter of the Comprehensive Plan. Staff did provide a full link to the Comprehensive Plan as well as the Chapter nine as an attachment. As the items are completed, new goals and policies should be identified and brought forward for implementation. So tonight's staff would like the Planning Commission to discuss the high priority strategy goals and their implementation progress thus far, as well as any other goals that should be added or changed in priority status. Obviously, we do look at the itinerary from time to time and place status on different ordinance. There's our action items that the Planning Commission would like to look at. Just note a few of them that we're kind of currently working on or City Council's currently working on. One of them was keeping a log of blighted or vacant properties to drive investment in businesses to strategic infill locations. City Council did approve, a couple of meetings back, a vacant building registry. This was modeled after Minneapolis's code that imposes a $7,000 fine for properties that are both vacant with significant property maintenance issues. So I believe that goes into effect at the end of this week here. We have an application ready to go with that, as well as we have a list of properties that, that we'll be reviewing for that. So that one's in the works right now and very close to being implemented. Next one is, we are looking at, from the last Planning Commission meeting, looking at, you know, how, how we can maybe look at our design standards to make it more advantageous for developers. How can we have, we do have the form-based code, so how can we have these properties or new properties fit in with our existing neighborhoods? So part of that is ensuring local land use controls and permitting procedures do not discourage housing development, also supporting infill development, and how can we match it to our neighborhoods where the contractor can do it economically, but also match it to the neighborhood so it's not just something that doesn't fit in? And then also improving the aesthetics of the main corridors. This is looking at potentially a commercial corridor district and allowing mixed-use development. That's something else that will be upcoming for discussion from the Planning Commission that might help drive redevelopment within the, the commercial corridor district. So that, with that, I'll answer it up, or I'll open it up to the Planning Commission if you have any questions or begin comments on, on maybe items to, to work on or what we've completed.
Just a quick question for the commission. Would you, are we best to go through these things, the, the steps, the land use, community character? Do you want to go by them one by one? Would you like that sort of process, or do you want to just kind of globally weigh in on, on things that, that are standing out for you? Any preference in the group?
I'd like to go one by one.
One by one? Very good. Then we're looking at the land, land use. Any questions about how we're doing on the land use? Are we making progress? Mr. Peterson?
Well, just a comment. I, I do like that we're doing that, and I, throughout the country, everybody is talking about housing, and, and that's one of the things which it looks like we're doing, is trying to get some of these lots, certain areas, back a little bit smaller so that you can get some starter homes, per se, to make them a little, and we'd already talked about the garages. I think that's a big step in the right direction to me, so. I don't know if we've looked at any general areas that that is, because so much of the city is already, you know, lotted out, I guess, per se.
Right. Good. Other questions, comments on, on land use? James?
So after the last code review and zoning, sorry, zoning district review, there was still some historically problematic spaces that more or less keep on finding themselves in a non-conforming situation. As to how we end up dealing with those within the future, not as to discourage those businesses or those property use that are currently existing from ceasing to exist, but somehow managing to work within it to help develop them either elsewhere or find the advantages to develop elsewhere, so that way the property can be developed into a conforming use. I know what I'm talking about is dreamy, but we keep historically trying to address certain specific properties within the non-conformity that they are, and it seems to be over decades. And at some point, we should potentially look at how either the, the non-conformity is never going to move and we need to be okay with it, or we need to help incentivize those organizations as to make it so that way it's conforming into the long-range development of the city.
Bringing this back to the comp plan, how do you think the comp plan could help this?
It, personally, I think that has more to do with incentive, incentivization and economic development than, per se, the comp plan. But it's, it's a very loose hand-in-hand situation.
All right, all right. Other comments on the land issue, on the land use portion, other thoughts on that? I'll just pipe in then at this point. I know we've, it's kind of, is it a medium or is it a low priority? The active steps towards a, the Minnesota, taking active steps to, towards implementing the Minnesota Green Steps program. I would love to see that elevated. I would love to see that one move from up towards high. I think it's, I think we could, the city could, we could use a lot of improvements in that. And that's just my two cents worth on that. I would love to see the green steps become more important moving forward. That may be an island on that one. But I'll put it out there. I think, I think it's, I was, remember when I brought it up the first time and somebody said, "Oh, yeah, we're, we're part of the Green Steps program"? It's like, but nobody talks about that in the city. It's not like something, we, we seem to kind of shy away from certain issues, and the environmental, the environment is one, and you don't even want to talk about climate change. I've discovered that. That's a, that's, that's another one. That's kind of a no-go. So other thoughts on, on how we're doing on the land use? I always say, I, I would say we're making some, some, some forward steps. I think the zoning code in 2022 will work towards that. I think we've demonstrated a willingness to look at redevelopment and infill, talk about how we can make it more practical to, for builders to, to, to build and things like this. So I, I would think we've, we've taken some, some good steps on that. James?
Yeah, I'll just kind of expand to Commissioner Norwood's comments. I know we, so we are doing a facade improvement grant right now. That's the money that the EDA really has available to try to, to help with some of our corridors, economic development-wise. I know if there's a, a larger pot that the EDA would, would have at some point, and, you know, something that we save up. I know we've been talking about kind of a larger revolving loan fund to help some of these businesses maybe make improvements, so that's something we've talked about. But, you know, it's probably a future thing as, as maybe more funds become available for that. So, and then the other thing that, something that I've been thinking about, we've talked about non-conforming uses and, and what we can do about that. Some other cities do have sections in their code that specifically deals how you maybe can expand non-conformities if they make sense. So that's something that, you know, Planning Commission could consider in the future.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think I just figured out how to ask my question.
All right.
So I was working on that for a while. Are there any other cities that say have grants like we have with the EDA for facade improvement that are specifically to bring buildings into conformity? Is that anything that you have ever seen or?
Not so much for bringing things into conformity, but more to try to incentivize facades to look nicer. That's typically where, where, where you see stuff.
Wondering if there's some space there for that, and, I mean, you say revolving loan fund, and I think of the, the Unified Fund. There's a lot of money there that's just looking for somebody to ask for it. So if there's anyone that you come across, I know that there's, there's money there.
And who controls this fund?
The BUFF money, the Brainerd Unified Fund.
Yeah, I don't know about this.
Oh, you don't know about this? Okay. Well, I'm on, I'm on that committee. It's basically a lot of local communities that had revolving loaned, loan money pooled them together. It is under Bladeck is kind of the auspices, but, so I'm the City of Brainerd representative. Rosemary is there from the county. Baxter, Crosby, there are also like Crowing Powers involved, and I'm going to miss some other ones. But basically, there's millions of dollars, big dollars. It is for economic development, so aiming for jobs, but I feel like there's overlap in that arena of jobs and they could come into conformity.
And the clients you're looking for are businesses, I presume? This is a business thing. This is not fixing up my house.
This is not fixing up your house, but if, if it's a business, it could be fixing up your business.
Okay. That's interesting to hear. Thank you very much. Good, good. Are we ready to move on to community character? Let's, Mr. DeVal, what do you have?
I'm, I'm curious about, we spent a lot of time on the Kingwood and Oak Street areas during, in 13th, during the, the zoning code update process, and I'm, I'm wondering, I'm wondering whether it's time to, to, to look back and see the, you know, the form-based code item here, basically. Did we achieve that with the TN2 district? It, it seemed like we struggled a bit more recently when we had a, a, an application before us to convert the old upholstery store into housing space, and we were talking about the front of that and, and, and thinking about trees and softening and landscape. So I'm, I'm curious about whether, whether we've, whether we've met that particular one here or whether that's a, an area of future interest to kind of think, how do we, how do we continue to get sort of the mixed uses on Kingwood and Oak and at that intersection with the? I wonder if Mr. Cranbeck could, could possibly respond?
I did read that one, and I do wonder, you know, maybe we do wrap that kind of into our design standards that we're working on right now. I think, I think that would certainly be, you know, did, did, did we meet that? And I, like Commissioner DeVal said, I'm not sure if we're quite there yet, so I think that's something we could review with, with the design standards.
So maybe, maybe we raise that one in as a, a higher priority, and it seems pretty easy to fold it into an existing initiative that's a high priority for us already, if it's not, if it doesn't make it too big of a, of, of, an issue there. But that's the one that jumps out at me, and I'm, you know, we did the, we did the, quickly did the easy one of updating the ordinance to reflect the changes in the plan, so that one, and that was a, a good process, so. That's what I, thank you.
I would agree with, with the, with your thoughts there. And I think if nothing else, our experience of working on the Kingwood project has influenced how we think about things a lot in going forth. And I know there's new members here, but maybe, well, go back to that another day, just kind of looking at the whole process of how do you manage areas where neighborhoods come together, and that's such a touchy issue. We, we saw it right on Washington Street recently with the real estate firm, or the, pardon me, yeah, that, the insurance company that bought the, the house next to them moving into the north side, and that certainly was a hot-button issue for a lot of people. And I kind of thought back to our work on that, because that was definitely an example of the commercial pushing the residential back, and that's something I think we're all concerned about. Community character. Any thoughts on the community character portion of this? I'm going to jump in with a quick question here. The question I have here is, we talked about the, the list of properties that are abandoned. What are we calling it? Vacant properties? Is that what we're calling them?
Yeah, so it's a vacant building registry.
Is this going to be a public registry? Can we, can members of the public, are we going to be, is this information we're going to be privy to?
It may be a part of the Community Development Staff Report, so I'm going to be, be going over that.
Okay, all right, all right. Stay tuned. Is that what you're, what you're saying?
Stay tuned.
Okay, very good, very good. I would agree that I think there's been definitely progress in the marketing branding, the work the EDA is doing. I think that's great, and they've actually got a good website up now and doing some things like that, so that's great to see that. Any thoughts in the group about boosting enforcement, which is something that was very clearly stated in the, in our Comprehensive Plan, very clearly stated that that was a value. And the City Council has decided that they don't want any active enforcement. Any thought about this?
Mr. Chair, how's, how's it going under this model, I guess would be the question I would ask, and, and are we getting the same net effect?
So in, in some ways, we're maybe not hitting some of the grass ones like we were in the past. That'd be a pretty standard when we drive around. I am seeing probably an increased number of properties that aren't mowing right now. Sites that get really bad with the collection of debris are getting called in. We'd see those when we were driving around. So, you know, I probably don't see that as big of an issue. The, the grass one is probably the biggest one where we'd send out more letters than what we're doing right now. The one thing I think that is an improvement, previously under the, the old code, it would be get their notice of violation, and then every week it'd be another $100 citation, up to $2,000, and then once it hit the $2,000 mark, it's just done for the year. So now, once we hit the $100, $200, $300 mark, we bring it to Safety and Public Works for review, and we've been going through an abatement process, so we get a search warrant from our attorney's office, get it signed off by a judge to actually go in there and remove some of that stuff. So that, I think, has been a, a very added benefit to, which we weren't previously doing. That is really just abating, maybe a sidewalk that's not shoveled, grass that's not mowed, and then garbage. So those were the only things previously that were, that were really abated, so I do think that's been a benefit to neighborhoods.
Mr. DeVal?
Yeah, as far as, you know, maintenance of structures, paint, roof, those sorts of things, where does that fall on this, in this current strategy? Is that?
I would say that probably, that's probably another one that isn't looked at quite as, quite as much as what we were previously looking at. Certainly, people complain about ones that are, that are really bad. I would say previously, you know, there's, we're probably held to a little higher standard. A lot of our housing stock are rentals, so that is part of the review process when you are doing a rental, is some of those property maintenance issues. But again, those homeowner-occupied ones maybe aren't held to as high a standard as what they were previously held to.
Diplomatic way of putting it?
So that's an area of growth, I think, or an opportunity to maybe raise that particular piece up. And those, that, that type of issue was really, I think, what I heard strongly in the comp plan was, you know, sort of the beat-up, rundown properties, and they exist and they exist. Part of it is the abandoned structures, right, and, or the vacant property, excuse me. And, and so we have an avenue for that, but for those that just are not getting the maintenance and continue to be sort of an eyesight, eyesore in the neighborhood, the, the means to be able to raise those up would be very, very important, so.
Tiffany, you have a point?
Well, I know that one of the concerns that the council had the last time, maybe it was two times ago when we talked about this, was staff time, and I think in the past there had been an intern, and whether the, you know, it is the most efficient use of staff time with... Yeah, I think you know where I'm going with this, James. How are we doing on staff time?
Yeah, so we did previously use an intern during the summertime that would specifically review lawns and kind of smaller things. I know our housing inspector would do most of the property maintenance stuff because it related to kind of the building side of things. You know, you, you get kind of the argument from both sides. One, you know, some community members would complain that we're using taxpayer dollars to drive around looking for issues. Well, the other side of it is, you know, residents are unhappy that we aren't doing that. So it's, you know, we hear it from both sides.
Would, Tiffany, how do you think the City Council would, would think towards a, of a resolution coming from the Planning Commission asking for active enforcement? Tiffany, how do you think the city council would, uh, would think towards a, of a, of a resolution coming from the planning commission asking for act of enforcement?
I'm not sure. Probably right now because of budgetary considerations. It would be something that would need a lot of lead time on it, uh, for looking at hiring an intern. And I know at one point we couldn't find anyone was the other problem. It's like there, there just wasn't one. And I feel like the employment market has maybe gotten better for us in that area. I don't know if we would. It would, I mean, you could ask them to discuss it.
Just kind of put, I'm just putting it out there. Just putting the idea out there.
I don't know that there's an appetite right now to be changing it, but if it's something to look at in the future, that might be something that the council could consider.
I would expect they have two concerns. There's the budget concerns and then there's a property rights concern.
Well, that's, there, there are seven council members plus the mayor that all have different concerns. But some of them you're gonna have wiggle room on and some of them you're not.
Very good. Very good. All right. Other thoughts about the community character portion? Anything I haven't, we haven't touched on yet? If not, um, I guess we're going to move along to, to housing to look at how we're doing on housing there. I think there's been some positive things there in terms of the infill development and doing that. James, how do you think we're doing on identifying housing needs? Where do you think we're, we're at with that? Are we meeting goals in that, in that area?
We are probably seeing, um, well, first of all, kind of the infill part of it, uh, the zoning code change, I think was pretty instrumental for some of these vacant lots or lots that houses need to be torn down. Previously it was really just habitat before the new zoning code that would maybe come through and do a single family home. Now there are other developers that will purchase a lot because of the ability to do potentially a duplex on the lot. Because, um, creating a single family home as a rent, as a rental just wasn't making financial feasibility sense for that property. So I do think opening it up to, in a lot of our zoning districts to two to four family units, uh, if the lot size can, can fit that, what was pretty instrumental. So I think that, you know, that part of it goes right into number two of, of, uh, you know, workforce housing, young families, that type of thing and, and helping that part. We have seen, you know, maybe just based on the economy. We've seen more developers maybe approach us in the last couple of years than, than what we previously have. You know, we have 805 Laurel Street that, uh, you know, we continue to work with. We have Country Manor that we continue to work with and that project is, is moving along. We had another, another one approached us about the Buffalo Hills property. So I do think there's a lot of positive things I've seen in the last few years. I know, you know, one of the, one of the limiting, limiting factors for getting some of these things done is just things have increased. Materials have increased significantly, um, in, you know, but pre-COVID versus what we have now. And then the ability to put infrastructure in really is a kind of a, something that, uh, developers, it's almost a stopping point in some areas. There's, there was development interest in a, a few properties south, but the infrastructure and, and the cost of infrastructure put in was kind of a limiting factor in that. So those are things we continue to work on. There are grants from the state of Minnesota that can maybe help in that as well. You know, certainly that's, uh, something that all, um, greater Minnesota communities are facing right now.
Very good. Other thoughts on the housing area and how we're doing on housing?
I guess I, I feel like we're trying really, really hard, but I think the problem is getting worse faster than we are making progress. And I don't know what to do about that. So any great ideas? Please. I just, I feel like we're not. We're still losing ground on our housing needs.
If it makes us feel any better, we're not alone at all.
No, no, we are not. No.
Everywhere. Absolutely everywhere. It's a number one issue. Very good. If we're willing and ready to move on, uh, economic development, any thoughts on how we're, uh, addressing our economic development goals that we set in the comp plan? To review, we looked at things like, well, uh, James listed the, the lighter properties. Looking at strategic economic, developing a strategic economic development plan and some things like this. James, how do you feel we're doing on the economic development component?
I do think we're doing well on that. Um, I'm going to propose, um, something at the next EDA meeting and maybe how we market some of our industrial properties. Right now we're marketing and we haven't been doing that for quite some time. You know, but how do we get it across to businesses if they're interested in coming to Brainerd? We have this shovel already industrial site. Um, you know, there's potential incentives that, you know, if, if they're bringing employees um, and looking to invest this, you know, the property might not be charged at market rate. So I'm going to bring that to the EDA to see, you know, how can we, you know, how do we want to advertise that in the future to try to get our industrial site properties that have been, you know, sitting there for, for 13 years to be developed and, and really develop for businesses that, that bring employees to, to Brainerd. So that's one thing I'm going to be working on at the next EDA meeting. One of the other things that was just passed by city council was a central business district, which was an expansion of the River to Rails district. That goes from east to west boundary of Washington slash Highway 210 and then down South 6th Street. So those are initiatives as well to help potentially spur redevelopment in some of those areas. So that the EDA has been pretty active on trying to, trying to figure out other incentive programs to, uh, to, to try to make, uh, business more friendly in Brainerd.
Very good. Other thoughts on the economic thing? I'll, I'll just comment briefly on the, uh, on the efforts downtown. It's been interesting to enhance the downtown retail environment. I think in my opinion, it's been kind of hit and miss. I think there's been some good things. I think there's tremendous events that happen now. If you look at Halloween and Christmas like this, um, the events that are done by, I think it's the downtown retail, um, uh, group. They're working with the, um, EDA is kind of behind that. They're, they're funding the downtown business group. Is that right? Downtown Business Councils, the DBC.
Yep. So the, yep, the EDA, um, I believe is $10,000 is, is yearly budgeted to help them coordinate and come up with, with different programs and ideas for downtown.
I would say that part has been good. There's, the, the part of it that's been kind of the fail is that I think we've seen this before. Cities can build infrastructure. It's easy to build a park. It's easier to build a new street. It's maintaining it. And downtown, the, uh, it's been really hit and miss at best with the maintenance downtown. A lot of the plantings have just gone overgrown trees and weeds and it doesn't seem to be any perhaps money is probably with the bottom line. There's no money to have somebody out and do the weeding and clean and clean up some of these things, but it's just kind of a pity to see, see you develop a little garden area, a little green areas and then just watch it get, you know, watch trees just start growing up out of it. I do what I can, but I'm only a one man wrecking crew pulling weeds downtown and pulling little trees and do what I can to try to clean up things. But I think that, that, that's kind of a lesson to be learned there is you can have, you can build all the downtown infrastructure you want, but if you don't maintain it, you know, you kind of, uh, it, it, it looks pretty sad. So anyhow, that's my thoughts there. Moving on to park and recreation, any comments on the park and recreation area? How we're doing there? I think the park board has done some great things with the master plan and some things like this. I don't know if they've expanded trails yet, but I think they've done some good work there. Moving on to the facilities and infrastructure, any thoughts on that component and how we're doing there?
I would, I would emphasize, reemphasize your, um, your, uh, desire to see the green steps, uh, programs and things, um, right now listed as a low priority. Getting that a little bit more higher profile. We've had a lot of discussion in the city about energy use related, some of our industrial applications and things coming in and, and, and it would be a good opportunity for us to think hard and, and revisit what our priorities are with our, our energy, future energy use and those sorts of things. So that one I would, I would love to see more than just be a low priority.
We get you. I'm, I'm with you on that. Other thoughts on the facilities and infrastructure?
I, I wonder if, oh, James can go first and give the whole answer.
Yeah, I'll, I'll maybe comment on the, on the green step cities. Obviously there's a lot to it. We have, uh, met a lot of the things to get to step three, which is some code changes. It talks about not requiring as much off-street parking. So there's a lot of things that have been done with it. I know, um, some of the other things to get to, to higher levels starts to target, um, what you can do for facilities, facility improvements to make them more green. It's, um, doing energy readings and stuff like that. So I think it, it may be a good exercise, um, maybe December sometime after we're getting, kind of closing in on, on some of our design stuff that we're looking at here in November, December to really take a look at, you know, what other action goals there are with green step cities that maybe planning commission could work on. Or, you know, something that's recommended, bring the city council to, to form some type of group. Cause I, I think it's probably a, maybe a bigger, bigger project than kind of one person taking that on.
Very good. Any other closing thoughts and anything I've missed here looking at the implementation?
Well, I guess that I just wanted to, BPU's kind of got their hands full right now. But what maybe at that time we could bring in the BPU commissioners as well. I'm, I'm super excited about poop to power.
Want to tell us about it?
Oh, sure. So we got this, the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of methane that gets generated. Yeah. And we've just been burning it to get rid of it and not using it. And so we're working with region five, getting some money so that we can use that methane to generate energy, cause we've got it already. And use that energy then to power the wastewater treatment plant, basically.
That sounds like a green step.
I mean, I don't know if it's officially there, but I'm excited about it.
I like it. No, I appreciate your excitement. That's great.
I like that too. Well, originally he told me it's not, you can't call it poop. And I was like, but that's what it is.
P to P? I think that's, uh, that's, uh, good enough for me on that. Any comments on the comp plan to implementation? If I also want to jump in on any other comments before we close the section here? Not hearing any other, then we're going to move on to our next item. Now it's time for the public forum and this is time for a.
Sorry, I didn't know you were closing the topic out. You're closing, closing the category out. Well, I would just, um, you know, going back if I would, um, you know, uh, part of the, part of the advantages or the, the, the implementation guidance in the comp plan is to be able to look at this stuff and say, do you shuffle the priorities? Or, or do you recommend, um, or, or identify budget needs to be able to achieve the goals in the plan? And I think we've, just in our conversation, we're saying, you know what, if we could have an intern position that would support our, our, um, development staff there to be able to knock out some of the things that are reasonably high on this plan. That would be a, a very helpful and probably a modest budget initiative in the overall scheme of things and, and whether that's, whether that's something that we would recommend as uh, coming from the, the, the planning commission to city council.
I would second all of that. I think that's, uh, and I think we've discussed before, if we are going to talk about budget, that's something you need to always talk about sooner than later. We're probably already talking about
Later.
26 at this point. The, the 25 ship is probably already sailing, uh, as we speak. Any, any other points that I've missed here tonight looking at the implementation? Anybody else, anything else that I've missed? I'm sure I've missed more. If not, are we, are we ready for the public forum? All right. I'm going to take that as a yes. I'm going to open the public forum and this is a chance for citizens to bring up subjects that are not on tonight's agenda. I ask you that respectful time limits on the, uh, on, on your presentation. And, um, if we can kind of keep going from subject to subject, not just keep going over the same point, that'll be helpful for us. And so I'm going to open the forum at 7:23 and I invite anybody to come up and speak.
Hello, I'm Sarah TC, 11687 Oak Ridge Road in Brainerd. Nice segue from your comprehensive plan into what I'd like to ask tonight. I would like to ask, um, as you're talking about your comprehensive plan, um, crypto mining, which last time I was here, we talked about as well. But just the fact that it doesn't really flow with that comprehensive plan in our community. And we've made some great strides since the last time we were here. But what I'd like to ask of all of you tonight is that you consider removing it as a permitted use in outdoor storage. I'm to the understanding that it was never even actually approved as a use. It was an assumed approved use in there, but removing it from outdoor storage would eliminate a lot of noise issues. Because as it sits right now, I mean, they, somebody could still come in and put up a building and put 51% of their operation in that building. And then throw the other 49% outside where it's going to be noisy to everyone that lives around it. And I think that just simply taking that and eliminating it from outdoor storage would solve a lot of issues. And it's also to my understanding that this type of industry isn't going away anytime soon, that it, there's a line of people wanting to come in and do this. So I would ask that you all consider making a motion or bringing that to your attention. Or I'm not sure which verbiage I'm supposed to use here, but asking you to, to recommend that it is removed from outdoor storage as a use.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up and speak? If anybody else? Okay. Anybody online? Nope. We'll, so we'll, we'll close at 7:25 then. I'm just going to take a moment before we move on to the next item and, uh, maybe can actually move into staff reports. James, any thoughts on, on when we, uh, when would a discussion of crypto fall into, would, does it fall into any of our future plans in terms of our agendas and what we're looking at?
So it is on, it is on the itinerary, um, as was, was discussed in the last meeting. So I guess there'd have to be stat, a direction from the planning commission to work on something else. Obviously, when we are kind of on the downside of an ordinance where we're starting to work on the public hearing and things have already been drafted can certainly start working on, on a new ordinance at that time. So right now the direction from the planning commission is to work on site design standards, uh, which is going to be quite a large undertaking. So, um, not sure if, it's not an agenda item right now. So I'm not sure if there can be, you know, a motion to direct staff to do something else at this time. But the next meeting, a commissioner could certainly add something that they'd like to, um, you know, change what staff is working on to, to work on something else.
All right. Thank you very much. So I think the commission understands it's kind of up to us to set the, uh, priorities in terms of our itinerary and, uh, like the, like the rules of our group say, anybody can, uh, can bring up a motion anytime they want or bring up an, an agenda item anytime they want. So the floor is always open to that. All right. If we're ready to move on, then we have, uh, we have staff reports, number nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so city council recently denied the IUP for 1918 TC Drive. Just want to make people aware that a workshop with the EDA and BPU, uh, will be discussing, uh, potential future options for the site. Such as a building, uh, did make it clear to VCV that, uh, city council did deny, um, the outdoor storage. So that's not up for consideration at that time. Um, I believe a meeting date is very close to being set as, as a workshop. Also, city council, uh, is working on camping ordinance that would prohibit camping on public and private property. So that's something that, uh, will be a second reading, um, at the next city council meeting as well as a public hearing. And then, uh, I did mention that, uh, they did pass the, uh, central business district expansion to River to Rails. And again, what that does is, uh, waives all sack and whack fees within that district up to 2029. And in addition to the sack and whack fees, the policy waives all building permit fees for projects with a valuation of $150,000 or less. Last thing that I'll touch on is the facade improvement grant, which I also mentioned. That opened up on Monday to start beginning applications. We, I believe we did about a two-week advertisement time because it is a first come, first serve. So it's up to $5,000, 50% matching grant to do some type of facade signage, landscape improvement. Really for any commercial or industrial business within the city of Brainerd. And, uh, I believe we've already, um, received a lot of interest in some applications. So that seems to be progressing well.
Very good. Thank you. That'll move us to our next item, number 10, commission member reports or, or questions for that matter. I think we're going to start with Mr. Deval. Do you have anything to add tonight?
Uh, I do not. Thank you.
All right. Colin?
I do not.
All right. I'm just going to ask a quick question of James here. So no camping in my, in my own backyard?
So there is a definition for camping of, um, actually, actually setting up a, a, a place of residence. So I guess if you were to set up residing outside rather than in your home, there could be an issue with that. But, um, you know, if it was, if it was at your own house and your kids camped, under that definition that I see, there wouldn't be an issue with that part of it.
Just checking on that.
Yep.
It's a scary future that if you can't go camping in your own backyard. All right. Mr. Peterson?
I have nothing.
You got nothing? James?
Nothing for me.
Tiffany? Well, that leads us to, uh, item 11. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close? Same sign? Too late. Thank you, everyone.